Welcome to our guest tonight, we certainly appreciate you being here and thank you for coming. We're gonna have our pledge of allegiance, my it's Mr. Tim, a few people in that and then Matt Kraken is gonna come to lead us in our indication.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, as we pause to give you thanks for this great day and this great season in which we celebrate your resurrection, we ask your blessings upon this city, our state and our nation, and most especially tonight, Father, upon our leaders, that everything that is done would be in accordance with our will, that you would give safety to each person that lives in, works around or travels through this city, we pray in Jesus' name.
Thanks, Matt, I appreciate that. First item on the agenda tonight is a recommendation to approve the minutes from the last meeting, do we have a recommendation to promote to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, there's a second. Okay, Francis. If you want to favor the hour. Thank you. Brandon Oswald, if you would come, please, ma'am, it's gonna get you to give us a senior citizen update and we appreciate the job that she does. Our senior citizens group has grown tremendously in the last year and a lot of this due to leadership that you have over there. And they're full every day on the front, so thank you, Brandon, go ahead and give us an update.
I wanted to come in and tell everyone the first annual senior citizens appreciation day is gonna be May. The segment is on a Friday evening from back to eight at Hamilton Rex Center. We're gonna have live music, free refreshments and gospel singing. All senior citizens age sixty and over are invited. You do not have to come to the center to be able to come to this, this is open to any age over sixty. So we would love for everyone to come out that can, we've got several people that's gonna come out and be speaking with us. So I'm hoping that we'll have a good turnout. Then on May ninth, on Friday, we're gonna go to Florence Lauderdale Coliseum to the forty-first annual senior citizens appreciation day up in Florence and we will be bussed up there with one of our maytop buses. So those are two of the things. May is older Americans month and so we're trying to get something doing here in Hamilton for older Americans month besides going to Florence. So we're seeing about thirty a day at the center and we're sending out thirty-eight lunches a day. On our bill something like that. That's all, thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon, appreciate you. Next item on the agenda tonight is we have a visitor with us from Birmingham, Alabama, his name is Scott Van Cannon. And Scott and I talked a few weeks ago and he wanted to come and present a presentation to the council. It's nothing that we're gonna vote on tonight, but it's something that he is a retail developer with retail strategies. And Scott, if you have a presentation ready, we'll come down and let you see that so we can see the screen.
Sure.
And then just let it turn over, if you need this microphone, I'll give it to you.
I'll need it.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I'm gonna pass out a few copies of y'all. All the way along. Thank you all for having me today, I appreciate your time, I'm excited to be here in Hamilton. As the mayor mentioned, we met several weeks ago to talk about some opportunities for the city as it's growing, as we all know. My firm Retail Strategies, we're an advisory firm based out of Birmingham. We're working typically with smaller communities across Alabama and the southeast to identify opportunities to bring new retail, while also opening up opportunities for some of the existing businesses within the community and also some entrepreneurial opportunities as well. So again, thank you very much for your time, over the next two and a half, three hours, we'll walk through, just kidding. Won't last quite that long, we're not gonna discuss data for three hours, I promise. I won't take more than fifteen, twenty minutes of your time, but I do wanna give you some insight on what we do, why I'm here and also, you know, what opportunities there are for the city. So again, thank you for welcoming me. I apologize on some of the graphics here, actually, they turned out pretty, pretty good, I had some help with Jan and some others with the city. But as you all know, this community is growing, there's definitely some great opportunities ahead of this community, especially, I believe, with the I-22 expansion and downtown revitalization, I think is gonna open up some really cool things for this community. So, you know, I snapped a few photos of some available properties, obviously, I believe four exits will open up, or I guess already existing here within the community, I think most of those are relatively empty at this point in time. Some of the shopping centers, some are wired, some have some empty boxes around town, which again presents opportunities to bring in some new retail or maybe even some expansions here in town as well. So I wanna start off by talking a little bit about the retail industry, just to inform you guys and fill you in on what retail has been, more importantly, where it is and where it's going right now. Obviously, the last five, six years have been a tough time for retail, as it has been for most industries. As you can see, 2013 was a monumental year as far as retail developments, that's actually counting square footage and shopping center developments across the country. 2013 actually added up more beyond 2010, eleven and twelve combined. So what that means is retail is starting to grow, consumer confidence is starting to grow as well. As you can see, these are actually shopping center sales in Q4 of 2013, all up three percent where they were twelve months prior. So again, these are all good signs of where retail is, where it's going, these are actually store sales by retail category, all up where they were twelve months ago as well. A few to point out, and I know this is a little hard to see, home furnishings up eight percent, it's a phenomenal sign. Obviously, the housing market is getting a little bit better, obviously, the economy is nowhere where we'd like to see it. We're definitely dealing with a lot of struggles, but we are making some moves and retail is reaping the benefits of that. Auto parts is another retail category I'd like to point out, only up a tenth of a percent, it's actually a good sign. What that's saying is people are starting to consume and buy more automobiles as opposed to fixing their junk cars. Very familiar with that, I have a fourteen-year-old car, so I'm not the one-tenth of a percent, I've spent a lot of time unfortunately at these auto shops. But again, these are all good signs that retail is heading in the right direction. So what that means for the retailers in the city right now is a phenomenal time to start marketing your community, your sites to these expanding retailers. As consumer confidence is starting to grow, these national retailers are starting to make some very aggressive expansion plans. Whereas in the past five, six years, these guys have just been holding on for dear life and haven't been opening up any new locations. Everybody, every concept you see here on the screen, plans to open up over a hundred locations in 2014 alone. And some of these guys will open up two hundred, three hundred locations across the community, or across the country, excuse me. So, one part, I guess a very important step of retail strategies is to be able to identify who those retailers are, what their expansion plans are, what part of the countries they're expanding into. So what I'm getting at here is you could spend and honestly waste a lot of time trying to track down the wrong retailer, not knowing what their expansion plans are. So part of our job is to again identify those retailers that are expanding rapidly in Alabama, potentially in some smaller growing communities that might be looking for interstate frontage or might be looking for downtown opportunities as well. So to give you kind of a little insight on how our retailers choosing sites and choosing locations, unfortunately, it is a very long process. It does not happen overnight, but as you can see, all this really begins with market research and performance measurement. Retailers are making decisions every day based on data, research and analysis. So communicating to a retailer that you're a community of eighty-five hundred or twenty thousand or thirty thousand, that is not enough information for them to be able to invest millions of dollars in your community or in a specific site as well. They wanna know research, they wanna know data, if they're looking to make an investment in your community. So jumping into the market research, you can see identifying competitor analysis, some of the socioeconomic characteristics of your community, identifying who the consumers are, what are their attitudes, what are their behaviors, what products and services are they buying at a higher rate than others? And again, these data points are some of the pieces that the retailers are looking for to make decisions on expansions, expansion locations. So who is Retail Strategies, as the mayor mentioned, we're based out of Birmingham, we're a very unique firm. We actually have been created by the combination of these two firms, both based out of Birmingham as well. Decision Data Resources is a research firm that has been providing economic development, research such as GIs planning, GIs mapping to cities and EDCs across the country, about fifteen years. Retail Specialist is our real estate arm, our Retail Specialist is also based out of Birmingham, is your typical commercial real estate firm, but they are focused strictly on retail. These guys have had transactions with most any retail you're probably familiar with here in the southeast. They do your typical leasing, brokerage, property management and so on. So collectively, our team, we have over two hundred years of experience dealing with retail, research and real estate. So it goes back to having relationships with these retailers, developers, brokers as well. So one of the first things we wanna do as your partner is to identify your trade area. As I mentioned, retailers aren't looking for just basic demographics, they wanna identify a trade area. And obviously, that's the area people are willing to drive to do their shopping or consuming within your community. So this is an example of a radius trade area, and this is actually a few radius trade area, it's obviously a ring around your community, which can be identified from several different locations. I believe this is actually a three, five and a ten mile radius. Reason we wanna identify multiple trade areas is because obviously retailers are gonna be interested in different trade areas. So for example, a grocery store or a Dick's Sporting Goods is typically gonna look at a much larger trade area than a Starbucks coffee would. Any people are more willing to drive a little bit further to go to a large box store like Dick's or a large grocery store, Whole Foods, Piggly Wiggly, whomever it may be, when you get your coffee on your way to work, it kinda needs to be on the way or you're probably not gonna pick it up. So again, reason we're identifying multiple trade areas. Retailers really are looking at drive time trade areas now, as the industry is starting to shift and change. When you thinking about going to pick up your coffee, you think of that in minutes, it takes me five minutes to get my coffee, it takes me eight minutes to get my groceries, not ten miles, five miles. So most likely, we'll also be identifying multiple drive time trade areas as well. We're strong proponents though that each community has a very unique trade area. So most likely, we'll be identifying a hand drawn trade area due to the parameters of your community. So to look at a few examples of some of our research deliverables, when we partner with the community, we want to know the community inside out. Obviously, nobody can tell the story of Hamilton better than you guys can, but we can identify data points that you can run to facilitate these conversations with retailers, developers, brokers and so on. So again, these are just a few examples, starting off with updating all your demographic research, extremely detailed information up to ten thousand variables with each of our individual reports. And as I mentioned, we wanna go well beyond the demographics, looking at consumer expenditures, consumer behavior and attitude models. Mosaic lifestyles is really where we're identifying the type of consumers you have in your trade area. Every person in this room is gonna fall into different spending categories and consumer categories. Most likely, all of us are gonna fall into multiple categories. Believe it or not, retailers look for a certain percentage of consumer categories to locate a new location. So if you're a suburban housewife or an urban nester or whatever category you may fall in, it's very important to identify that so the retailers can make a decision based on where, how they wanna expand their locations. Probably the two most important research models that we run are the gap analysis and the peer analysis. Gap analysis is gonna identify the amount of dollars actually leaving the community on an annual basis and that'll be broken up into multiple retail categories. So our people, you know, how many dollars are being spent in Tupelo that are not being spent here in this community down in Tuscaloosa, wherever it may be. Peer analysis is actually, in my eyes, one of the most unique components of our research, something we've developed in-house, where we identify communities across the region that look extremely similar to Hamilton as far as your demographics, your growth patterns, your trade areas, consumer expenditures, again, thousands of data points we're looking at. The reason we wanna identify these other cities that look a lot like Hamilton is we can identify retailers that have a propensity to locate markets very similar to this one here in town. I've got a little bit of details on each of those reported here shortly. So again, why do we need new retail, why do we want new retail? Well, for the city's sake, increasing sales tax revenue is always a goal, whether it's in economic development, the city or the chambers working on it. City always wants to grow, job creation as well. We're strong proponents that a strong retail mix can absolutely assist in your industrial recruitment efforts as well. As a lot of these corporate decision makers around the country and the world are looking for expansion locations, you gotta keep in mind, they're also looking for communities where their kids can grow up, where their wife or husband can have shopping options and where their employees can have some shopping options as well. And then that ties back into improving quality of life for your citizens. Obviously, as we're working on new developments, redevelopment opportunities that'll improve the aesthetics of the community over a certain amount of time. So again, starting off with the demographics, wanna identify where you've been, where you are, more importantly, where you headed and where you need to be. So we'll be looking at historical demographics, present demographics and obviously future projections as well. Again, these are just some quick population change numbers, we wanna go well deeper than that, looking at socioeconomic factors, how many college graduates do you have in the area, what is the labor force look like and so on. So as I mentioned, demographics can tell a very small part of your community. We need to go well beyond that to identify specific data points that retailers are looking for to make decisions. So this is just using a quick example of consumer expenditure, this is a consumer expenditure report, identifying the amount of dollars literally spent on specific products and goods within your trade area or your community. And as you can see, this specific example is using food, beverage and tobacco sales within this town. Again, keep in mind, these are all just snapshots, a very small piece of the full research report. But you can see, we're identifying amount of dollars being spent on food and beverage in this community comparing to the average US household. Really, some of the data points that we're gonna be looking at is the allocation index. This one on two point six is actually showing that this community, even though they might spend well over a thousand dollars less than the average household on total food and beverage, they're two point six percent more likely to purchase food and beverage within this community in the average household. So those are some of the data points that we'll be looking at and I don't know why that's all gray. And again, we also wanna identify the consumer behaviors, consumer attitudes. If you do not have a sporting goods shop in town or if you do not have a laundry shop in town, would the behaviors and the attitudes of your consumers make sense to bring in, to recruit a new sporting goods shop? So very similar here, the line item I wanna really focus on is the second from the bottom here is actually showing how many people in this community have purchased a sofa bed convertible. As you can see, that number is forty-two sixteen, which is roughly nine point one percent of the households within this trade area. Most importantly though, as you can see, this community is ninety-seven point eight eight percent more likely to buy a sofa bed convertible than the average household. That's great information to share with existing businesses, maybe a furniture or mattress shop in town. If there's a gap or a lack of furniture stores, this is the kinda data that the retailers are gonna eat up. So you gotta identify those key data points these guys are looking for, I don't know how we lost our color here, but I will move on. Again, the peer analysis is where we'll identify communities across the region, typically across the southeast for you guys, identifying communities that are extremely similar to you, to identify those retailers that have a propensity to locate markets very similar to Hamilton here. And as you can see, again, these are just a snapshot, we're looking at population figures, we'll be comparing trade areas, average household income is a big factor, and then looking at specific expenditures into specific, or different retail categories. As you can see apparel, food and beverage, household furnishings are all showing up on this report. I'll give you an example of how we would use something like this. So we started working with the city of Rockledge, Florida, they're a smaller community, about forty-five minutes outside of Orlando. One of the, the big retailers on Rockledge's wish list per se was an Academy Sports. And they said, you know, Academy actually took a look at our market several years back and said we were too small, we didn't fit demographic wise. First thing we did was actually ran this peer analysis. We identified about thirty-eight cities across the country that were eerily similar to Rockledge. Of those thirty-eight cities, we identified seven of them already had an Academy Sports within their market. So the city actually reached back out to Academy with the research that we had conducted on behalf of the community of Rockledge. And they're actually kinda came back and speaking with the city as we speak. So it kinda gives you some real life examples on how you can use some of these reports to influence retailers, developers, brokers. So I mentioned the gap, the gap analysis, and this is actually a summary where it's really cleaned up. It's divided into multiple retail categories, each of these categories are actually divided into multiple subcategories as well. But this is our summary, which makes it clean and pretty. Again, identifying the amount of dollars leaving your community on an annual basis. I believe this report came from the city of La Grange, Georgia. And you can see, La Grange is losing a hundred and fifty-six point six million dollars in retail sales on an annual basis. The big one is grocery stores. So people are spending forty-one point six million dollars outside of La Grange and other grocery stores, and the service restaurants and so on. Obviously, present that top to bottom, there's a reason we are cutting off right at a million dollars. Typically, to talk to any national retailer, you need to have a gap of at least a million dollars or above to grab their interest. Anything below a million dollars, we're strong proponents to use that research and analysis to assist your current business owners within the community or even identify some entrepreneurial opportunities as well. Give you a quick example, one of our clients, we identified a gap in the category of paint and supplies. This gap was six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So again, if you try to approach Sherwin-Williams or Pittsburgh Paints with this information, they're looking for gaps at three, four, five million dollars, cause they're only gonna be able to capture so much of the dollars leaving your community eagerly. So what this city did, working with the Chamber of Commerce as well, they identified a local mom and pop hardware store that just so happened to have an empty retail box next door. It's an eyesore to their downtown area, it was in a blighted shopping center. Using the gap analysis and identifying that the city was leaking six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in paint supply sales, these guys actually opened up a paint supply shop directly next door to their hardware store, adding a second stream of revenue to that business owner and eliminating the blight in their shopping center as well. So you can see, we'll also identify number of retailers to fit each individual gap and potential square footage that will fit as well. So again, that's where we'll be identifying some of the available properties in the community. So from all this analysis, all this research, we'll develop a retail prospect list on behalf of the city, identifying the retailers that are expanding throughout Alabama, that we know fit the parameters of this community, of this trade area and of the analysis as well. And then the market maximization summary is something that I kinda mentioned earlier, not only identifying the businesses that need to be recruited, but also what opportunities there are for your current business owners and what opportunities there are for any entrepreneurs as well. We can also run on-demand reports at any point in time. So if a developer comes to the community and is interested in putting in a grocery store or a sporting goods shop, we can run an on-demand report, have it done typically within twenty-four hours if they're insisting on it. Same goes with any of the local business owners or entrepreneurs in the community as well. So the retail prospect list looks a little like this, this is just kind of a quick example, this is obviously a restaurant retail prospect list. You can see this specific community is losing roughly twenty-one point seven million dollars in restaurant sales. So again, we'll be identifying the restaurants that would fit this community, that are expanding, that will match up with some sites here in the community as well, we'll do that for each retail category. Now, we can easily give you thirty, forty retailers that would be considered a prospect. We really wanna narrow that down to probably eight to ten to go out and physically recruit. So the list will be probably brought down a little bit from what you're seeing here. We'll also develop marketing materials on behalf of the city. So if any city officials are ever attending any kind of trade shows, if they're carrying on conversations with developers, brokers, these are great pieces to tell the story of the community. I'm gonna pass out a few, one of our clients here in Daleville. And I'll walk through those as you are. I'll hold one up, cause it's hard to see on the screen. So this is one of our clients, Daleville, Alabama, not familiar with them, they're near Dothan, a smaller community. But on the actual marketing piece, which I apologize, does not show up super clear on the projector, we actually have a map of their trade area laying out all the population layout. We also have identified multiple radius trade areas, their main thoroughfares within town, proximity to some of their major markets, we'll probably show proximity to Tuscaloosa, Birmingham, Tupelo, where we probably believe people are leaving to do their shopping. We also have a demographic profile towards the bottom of this piece, identifying different trade areas, whether it's population, I think we have a number of employees, medium household income as well from different trade areas. And on this specific example, we have a five and a ten mile trade area identified for those three categories and a fifteen and thirty minute trade area. So again, just a quick snapshot of who the community is, what its size is. On the inside, again, I'm sorry, I know it's hard to see, this is actually an aerial map of the current retail landscape. So retailers are gonna wanna know who's their competition, where their clustering possibilities. And what I mean by clustering is retailers tend to cluster to one another. It's no coincidence that you see a Walgreens and a CVS directly across the street from each other. It's ironic, cause they're competitors, but again, they wanna cluster. So they look for shopping centers, so all this, again, we identify all of your current retail landscape, major thoroughfares within the community, where the major intersections are, vehicles per day, so the traffic. And we'll also identify some areas fit for potential new developments, maybe a redevelopment opportunity with the blighted shopping center in town. We actually conduct all that analysis when we have a, we have one of our licensed real estate professionals spend half a day within a community, meeting some of the business owners and driving around town, identifying opportunities here. So basically, we wanna identify some of your key, key properties in town. So just a few other snapshots, again, there's an overview of the actual aerial, identifying some shopping centers, some of the current retailers. There's the Daleville one right there, I'm sorry, here's a great one, we're here in Gardendale, we've identified, this is actually a recruitment zone, shopping center where they have some empty boxes and this is a redevelopment opportunity as well. So retailers like to see where these zones are throughout your community. So again, those will be identified on the market drive and we have our licensed real estate professionals drive the market. So looking at sales tax collections, you know, what are retailers bringing to communities? If I'm not mistaken, Hamilton sees three percent local sales tax, is that correct? So just to kinda put this at quantitative standpoint. So just to kind of put this at quantitative standpoint, if you are bringing in, say, potentially another grocery store or a larger box retailer, these guys will typically bill anywhere between eight to fifteen million dollars a year, depending on their location, obviously, there's a lot of factors that go into that. So we'll say on average, twelve million dollars annually. Three percent of that's three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars directly to the city budget on an annual basis. Looking at medium, medium-sized boxes, such as a Verizon, one of those, AT&amp;T shop, a tractor supply, that you guys have one of those in town, anywhere between three and four million on an annual basis, which will convert to a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars to the city annually. And then down to some of the smaller box concepts, your fast food, your fast casual, and a lot of these are growing extremely rapidly right now. These guys will bill anywhere between one to two million. McDonald's typically will bring in two-and-a-half million dollars of revenue on an annual basis. So that will convert to sixty thousand dollars on an annual basis to the city. Now, it's not including the advantages you see, is bringing in new retailers can attract additional retailers as well. You hope to fill in some empty boxes, which are probably blighted shopping centers within the area. I think with the, with what you got going on in downtown, it's definitely gonna bring in some entrepreneurial opportunities for some of the, some of the entrepreneurs in the area. With the I-22 interstate, I think with your, your four exits there, a lot of possibilities as far as gas stations, some restaurant concepts and so on, typically what you're gonna see on an interstate exit. So where's all this data go? Where's all this research go? Well, again, partnering with the city, we load all this onto our online software called Basecamp. We'll give the city, obviously, a login with their own account, and you can access any of the reports online. It's a great platform to use to share these reports with other organizations within the city or the county. So if the city wanted to share the, the gap analysis with the Chamber of Commerce or with the Economic Development folks in town, easy way to do that via Basecamp. If we are to run any kind of on-demand reports on behalf of the city, a property owner, a broker in town, we can load those onto Basecamp as well, and those can easily be shared as well. So it's, it's really our way to collaborate with our clients, and we can communicate through pieces on Basecamp as well. So we also include a licensed to retail lease track. If you're not familiar with retail lease track, it's a national software or online platform as well, which identifies pretty much every national retailer across the country. You can identify the parameters or the requirements of each individual retailer, what demographics they're looking for, what trade areas they're looking for, what kind of properties and sites they're looking for as well. That's all on retail lease track, and the contact as well. So you can identify the regional contact for, say, Denny's or Waffle House or Burger King, whoever it may be, Winn-Dixie. Their con, full contact information is on here. Again, their market requirements and their site criteria is all loaded onto retail lease track. So this is a very valuable tool that is included in, in working with retail strategies as well. And you can export reports and so on. Just wanna run through a few quick success stories. Actually, we were talking about La Grange earlier. When we were working with La Grange, they had a Texas broker come to the community, was working with a developer, was, was asking and inquiring about a report on pet supply products. Our contact reached out to us, we ran out on-demand report, identifying literally dollars being spent on specific pet supplies and pet products within La Grange and their greater trade area. We presented that back to the city or back to the chamber, I believe, which shared that with the brokers and the developers, and they had an LOI signed with Petsense within, I believe, three months. If you're not familiar with Petsense, they're a smaller concept to your Pet Code and Petsmart. They're kind of some of the bigger guys. Here's a great example of where we were able to use the research to identify an expansion opportunity in El Campo, Texas. El Campo, very small community, about an hour outside of Houston. Palais Royal, which probably very few of you are familiar with, they're a discounted apartment store that's basically only in Texas, kind of like your TJ Maxx, Ross, but at a much smaller level. One of their largest gaps, the city was losing twelve-point-eight million dollars in department store sales. Ironically, they had a medium-sized department store in town. Well, the city had shared this research with Palais Royal, who just so happened to have an old empty blockbuster building directly next door. And the research was exactly what they needed to, you know, the quantitative information they needed to expand their presence in the community, add additional products and service lines, products and goods to their existing store in town to prevent people leaving the community to basically get the products that they, they currently, or were not offering at the time. And again, that, once they had that conversation with the retailer, they said, we had always toyed with expanding into the empty box next door, which had sat empty for years, but they never had the analysis and the research to do so. So again, kind of give you a few examples on how this research can assist your existing businesses. Here's one in A-Rab, Alabama. I'm sure you guys are familiar with A-Rab, where the analysis was used to identify that they needed another grocery store. People reached out to a specific property owner in town and folks at Pigly Wiggly and were able to recruit a, a new Pigly Wiggly there in A-Rab, which as you can see, brought about sixty to eighty-five jobs there in town. And that's about it. I wanna open up to any questions, comments, concerns that anybody has. No questions?
Scott, I appreciate you coming tonight and sharing.
Yes, sir.
With counsel. What would you do, what would be the next step? You put a proposal together so we can look at, I mean, obviously, without voting anything.
Sure, absolutely.
Because you're a consultant, if we, if we're business with it, we'd be hiring you to do this research, and you'll put a proposal for us.
Yes, sir. I can have a proposal to you this week, and you can share that with the counsel member.
That could be a couple of weeks before we meet again.
Sure.
But we'll share this, and we can talk with each other and see if this is something that's interesting.
And if anybody, I'm gonna leave a stack of cards up front. If anybody wants to shoot me some individual questions, please feel free to shoot me an email, I'll be glad to answer.
Appreciate you coming. I know you drove from Birmingham, and I appreciate you taking the time to come and share, share with us. Like, see, this is their first time to see this, but you and I talked two, three weeks ago.
Yes, sir.
This is all new to most of us, except for me and Ben, because I think he and he's the only one who was there when we talked a few weeks ago, but thank you for coming. I'm gonna move number nine up, let Reed cabinet, because he has drove from Montgomery. And Reed, if you would come, and we have a resolution here that you sent in, I think Thursday, it was all Friday, so this just kind of tell us what we're doing. We're not ready to borrowing money yet, but we're, we're gonna be ready. So what we're doing is letting you get the paperwork started, because we don't really know the amount. So kind of guide us through this resolution, if you don't care.
Yeah, this resolution really accomplishes a couple of different things. Under the tax, the federal tax code, the IRS rules, when a city or a county issues tax-exempt bonds, they can use that money for projects going forward. They can also use that money to reimburse themselves for any expenditures they have made sixty days prior to when they issue their bonds. So let's just say, you know, City X has a redevelopment project, and they start spending money out of their budget, and they start on, you know, March 1, and they come on April 15th and issue tax-exempt bonds, they can use that money to pay themselves back for the expenditure made on March 1st. But your, your window is sixty days to look back under the tax law. So what this does, this is, they're, the IRS rules say, if a city or a county passes what's called a reimbursement resolution, which is just simply says, at some point in the future, we intend to issue tax-exempt municipal bonds, then the IRS will let you look back to sixty days prior to issue, passing that resolution. So if it ends up being six months from now, when you issue tax-exempt bonds, you can go back, if you've spent any money out of your budget, you can go back and reimburse yourself. A resolution doesn't require the city to issue bonds if you, you know, later change your mind, or something happens in the bond market, or for whatever reason, you decide you're not going to issue bonds, then, you know, no harm, no foul, you've got this resolution on the books. But it does allow you to mark a point in time, and if the IRS did ever come and mark a bond issue, then you have this in your file, and everything would be proper. The other thing this does is it engages the team, the bond council, Bradley, A-Rab, and First National Bank, who's a financial advisor and the underwriter, to begin preparing the documentation. Again, we need to, the city needs to have an official statement put together, which takes some time, have to work with Ben and pull a lot of the figures. You gotta get your credit rating in place, that process takes a little bit of time. And those are things that all need to be done, whether, you know, the exact amount of money you wanna borrow or not. If you borrow one million dollars or eight million dollars, you still gotta have the same basic set of documents put together. So this resolution just says, you know, that the financing team, the bond council, the underwriter and the financial advisor can move forward, begin putting those documents together. And then whenever you are ready, once those documents are put together and the credit rating's in place, and then whenever you're ready, you can pull the trigger at whatever time you choose to actually go into the market and sell the bonds and lock the interest rate in. So we've had a good few weeks since I was here last, we've had a good few weeks in the bond market, rates have dropped a little bit, so that's good. Don't know how long they'll stay, you never know the future, but right now, today, they look pretty good. So this resolution really just allows you to get your paperwork done, and then it accomplishes the reimbursement resolution part we talked about earlier.
Is there any questions for Reed, Francis, or Graham, or Tanger?
What, what we're seeing in your, your kind of charge is important.
Yeah, it's typically what we've charged is less than one percent, about eight tenths of a percent, and that's, you know, somewhere in that range, it might be more than eight tenths of a percent.
Is that locked in at the time we borrow the money?
The interest rate.
Papers are signed?
The interest rate is locked.
Interest rate, at that time?
Is locked in.
This has nothing to do with this, this is just to...
Get the paperwork.
Get the, yeah, get the ball rolling and do all the paperwork.
So it says, not exceed nine.
Yeah, that's just a, that's just a figure. We ran a bunch of different scenarios for the mayor, and I think Alan was looking at some of them. That was the largest one we ever ran. That number's in brackets just to say, you can make it whatever you want it to be. There's really no harm in, in putting it at nine. If you think, you know, you might end up at seven, or five, or four, again, for purposes of the IRS rules, they just wanna know some approximate amount, but that number's in brackets just to say, you can set it at whatever you wanna set it at. But that was the largest figure we had been given to run a scenario for the city.
And that was the main barrier that we looked at, though.
No, sir. No, sir. It's like you said, we ran numbers on, I think, two or three million, above two-nine.
Right.
Which we don't think we know we're near that much.
Right.
You know, you have to have something to go by to run the, run the numbers we have, so, no doubt, that's, I mean, that's just a figure.
Yeah, that, we put it in brackets for that reason. It just means it's whatever you want it to be.
And above that, where you have in brackets various public park and recreation improvements, public roadway and street improvements, anything can go in that bracket?
That's right.
Such as fire department improvements?
That's right. We left, just didn't have the full list of what you may consider, but you can certainly add anything in there.
Or take anything away?
Ma'am.
Or take anything away?
That's right.
That's just there.
That's right. These are just, this doesn't say that you're absolutely are going to borrow for that reason, it's just saying that we intend to issue tax-exempt bonds, and the projects may include this list, so...
So that's pretty fluid?
It's pretty fluid, yes, ma'am.
And is there anything that this would not cover? That you can think of?
Well, it's got...
What about street paving?
Yeah, it's got street improvements in there, public roadway and street improvements, and it says various park and recreational improvements. You know, another thing, you know, you could add in various capital improvements. You know, you know you gotta use the money for capital expenditures, you can't use it for salaries, and you could add in various capital improvements, and that would kind of encompass...
That would cover it.
That would cover anything else that you might...
Another, down here's one of our maidens or something. What is we can't use for paving? Somebody say, was it, what bond issue was it?
Are you talking about the oil tax, gas tax that's used, as in, I don't know, what you're talking about?
I didn't think we could use the bond money to pave because the pavement's not gonna last twenty years, it's gonna deteriorate, and that was, I thought that was one of the stipulations, that the bond money was to be used on things that were gonna have a, a longer life than twenty years, and asphalt's gonna...
Yeah, typically, I mean, cities and counties all over the state borrow for paving projects, and they don't normally do a thirty-year bond for paving projects, they might do five or ten years. And so when you amortize the new money portion, you just wanna be careful that you're not doing exactly what you're not talking about. You don't wanna borrow for thirty years on a street that might last you ten, that doesn't make a lot of sense. So what you wanna make sure you do is, whatever money is in there for paving, you wanna make sure that's paid off in five or ten years. You don't wanna go beyond the useful life of the person. So there's no pro, there's no prohibition against using bond proceeds to pay for streets, it's just not smart to go out and do long-term bond financing. You know, you wanna make sure that's paid off fairly quickly. So when we structure these things, we say, what are you gonna use the money for? And then we look at the, the useful life of the asset that you're financing. The IRS actually won't let you go beyond a hundred-and-twenty percent of the useful life, so the lawyers, when they put the paperwork together, have to look at each one of those uses and make sure you're not doing that. And so that'll be part of the process that you go through when you put this paperwork together.
I would hate no questions.
That explains it better than I can, and I appreciate your answer.
Oh, sure. Wait, I'm making a motion that we approve this resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry. Is there a second to approve this resolution?
I have a second.
Any other questions? Paul, Ferris, yeah?
I have a second.
Thank you, Reed. I appreciate you coming. I know you drove up here from Montgomery just for this, but we, we need you here to explain it, because I knew I couldn't...
Well, I'm glad to be here.
Answer all the questions for you, and I, I knew that you could guide us through this process.
Glad to be here, we appreciate it, and we will be in touch.
Yes, sir.
Along all in.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Forward's a recommendation to approve the pavement of eleven-thousand-five-hundred of Goober Mills in Cablewood for an environmental report on Grandview Bridge. What this is, is a environmental study for that bridge, and I talked to Heath Reed about it Thursday evening. And everyone that's doing these bridges are having to do this study. At the time we started, we didn't know that these were gonna be included, and Scott may be aware of this, because the counties having to do it too, some of their bridge replacements, Wendell's having to do it too. But this is something that's necessary in order to pursue a replacement of that bridge and have this environmental study done. Scott, do you know anything else for the county? I know that they're having to do the same thing, because I've talked to them today.
Nothing other than, just, just a talk.
Okay. So in order to proceed, we need a recommendation to go ahead and get this done, that's part of the project.
It has to be done.
Yes, ma'am.
It's my motion, but you don't have a problem.
Is there a second? Thank you, Tim. Paul and Ferris, yeah? Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Kimmy Vincent here. Kimmy and I met last week, we were talking about the banners that's gonna be on our new poles, and our lights have been all up, and they're all running, and Kimmy, I appreciate you taking time to represent the Downtown Hampton Association, so we'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you, Wade and counsel, for letting me be here tonight. On behalf of the Doug Town Hamilton Association, we have a board that consists of now eight members. Normally, it's nine, we have an open seat. We became organized back in the day when Mr. Bobby Holiday became mayor. We became organized back in the day when Mr. Bobby Halliday became mayor, and he caught me on the sidewalk and asked me to form a board and help follow through with this downtown revitalization and just, I think he kind of wanted, you know, some outside opinion. So we're not associated with the city. We are a 501(c)(4) organization as far as tax purposes are concerned. Back in 2009, and it's hard to think now, it's 2014, and I'm like, it's really been that long. But it has, and I couldn't have done it without a wonderful board and great people to work with, our merchants, other businesses in this town. What we have come forth to present with you tonight are the banners for these decorative poles. We have all raised the money from our local merchants, not downtown merchants. They're welcome to purchase one if they would like, but we have actually started on the outskirts of our city and kind of come back in as far as purchasing these banners. Here is what the preliminary view of the banners are. I've already, we've met with the Hamilton Sullens Historic Board, and that gave us approval to use the picture of the Hamilton Sullens home. We have on here, Welcome to Hamilton. It says Historic Hamilton Sullens House, established eighteen eighty-two to eighty-three. And at the bottom, we have the hang-down portion, which is vinyl. The banner itself is a sunbrella fabric, which is here. It's really thick. It's a marine acrylic, a hundred percent acrylic fabric, fade resistant. It has a three-year warranty. I have been in contact with the company. I have all kinds of warranty information. They have a clear coating on this banner itself that prevents, like, UV fading. The vinyl also has a clear coat on it to prevent scratching and UV fading. The picture of the Hamilton Sullens home will be on both sides of the banner. The, what's called the sponsorship that hangs down will have the same merchant or business or individual on both sides at this point. They have sold really well, and I'm very proud for that. That just goes to show how much other businesses besides those in downtown are taking pride in what this project has turned into. Our first set is probably within four to five banners of being totally complete, and at that point, when they are complete, we will be purchasing the entire set of eighteen banners. At first, we thought there was going to be twenty-two, but that included the stop sign poles, so we had to back a few out.
Can I see that Kimmy, help pass it?
I have, I have purchase order sheets if anyone's interested, and you can contact me or any of the board members. Right now, we only have the eight board members. We have not opened up membership. We plan to do this hopefully at the downtown grand reopening. We're going to try to set up just a little table, and if anybody's interested, you know, we will have applications for membership. And we meet on the first Monday night, second Monday night. I keep my Mondays mixed up. Second Monday night, and the public is welcome. Our meeting places are here, there, and yonder until we can get somewhere carved in stone. But, you know, I'll be glad to contact you. I will let Ed know when we get something carved in stone as far as where we will constantly meet. It's kind of hard to announce it if you don't know where you're going to meet every time. There are, our association really is here for downtown Hamilton. We will serve as an advocate for these merchants and other businesses in this community. With all that said, and the banners or the pictures floating around, we intend on having more than just the one set. We would like to go ahead and proceed with seasonal sets of eighteen. And when I say a set, that's eighteen. Just the banner and the vinyl is called like a combo, so that's one. They're a hundred and seventy-five dollars. The entire set for four is running, if you buy all four, they're running at six hundred and fifty dollars. So if anyone is interested, please, you know, I'll give my cell phone number's two oh five four one two twenty-nine ninety-nine. You're welcome to call me. You can Facebook me a message. I think the chamber has kind of helped us out in a way by putting the purchase order up on their website. I don't know that the city has it up yet or not, but I have left an application for that to be done. At this point, it's the time that I just want to let everyone know that when we started this project, I know there was a lot of questions, but it's going to be a gorgeous project for not only now, but for our children, our grandchildren, and for years to come. It's just, it looks absolutely beautiful, and I just couldn't thank anybody that's had anything to do with it enough. So if anybody has any questions right now, we'd like to answer those as far as the banners are concerned, or the seasons. Right now, we're doing, we're going to look at patriotic Thanksgiving and Christmas with this one, and possibly add more. But we kind of have to leave that to a minimum because we require a city, two employees and a bucket truck. It's real easy for installation, so it's just time consuming right now until we get it under.
Kimmy, eighteen now is how much? Thirty something hundred dollars?
It's going to be about nineteen hundred dollars for the entire set.
Nineteen hundred for eighteen?
Mm-hmm.
And you've got enough for one set now, maybe one more?
Three or four. You're there that we've got to pick up money. I know I've got to pick up money tomorrow. You know, every day I have a phone call or, you know, somebody's sending something to us at our bill box, which is twelve twenty-three Hamilton. You know, I'd be glad to, like I say, bring you by an invoice or a purchase order form, whichever one.
So if I want to buy one banner for four seasons, my business, what, how much would be the cost?
Six hundred and fifty dollars.
Six hundred and fifty, okay.
And that's all. All that's included on the purchase order form. I would like to...
So one seventy-five for one banner?
That's one banner with one hang-down sponsorship.
Okay.
On both sides?
On both sides right now. If they keep selling as well as they are, there may be the possibility that we have to, you know, maybe on the next set, flip and do a business on each side of the vinyl sponsorship that hangs there.
I'd like the suggestion that, whether we vote on it tonight or not, that the city purchase a seasonal set, the nineteen hundred dollars, that's the least we can, of course, I mean, we're favored in this project, look for what, they could show support to the merchants. And thank you for, and your, for all you do because you spent endless hours on this. I know, and I don't know how you've had time to do anything else you've done, but it does not go unnoticed. And I know you checked into different companies regarding this, and...
And my reasoning for going with this company was one thing, customer service.
And we might as well bring it up right now because it's going to be brought up about the cost.
Yes.
We've already been approached about the Maroon.
Yeah, we do have, there is a burgundy available, and we will probably end up using that later on, and it has become a stock fabric. But right now, we chose the green because our trees are small, and the green can still be seen, and it's going to be bright and vibrant. The colors, like I said, UV resistant for three years, and anything that we make, what few dollars we're making over the cost, is basically for replacements. If they're damaged, then we can get the company to send us another one. I mean, that's basically what's...
These companies where?
They're in Cummings, Georgia, and I did check luckily, and I could not find anyone that would return my call, answer my emails, or, you know, that would contact me in a timely manner in order to get this processed.
Well, I appreciate you doing that. I mean...
And they will be ready before grand reopening?
We know this project started even before we were elected because what we were running, all of us were running problems. People were saying, hey, you're going to support it downtown? You're going to support it? And we all said we would, and we have, and, you know, we made sure this happened. And actually, this started before you guys were here, during mayor holidays, I think. So it's been a several-year project. It's not something that's just started, so...
I think it's one of all of you.
I know that a lot of work has been done, and we appreciate everybody, even the past administration, that made sure this happened.
Absolutely. I mean, I can't start to name because there's straight employees and all different departments that's just been, that it's just going to be so nice to have that grand reopening and more events coming on downtown. We work together with the chamber. We have a meeting tomorrow night, and, you know, there's just different city organizations that I've spoke to. I've never had a problem when I spoke and asked for money. They've been more than welcome. So, I mean, we've got a lot of support behind the whole project.
And we realize what the merchants have gone through.
Yes.
You know, I've served in Florida for forty-plus years. I know how it goes. You either have business and pay your bills, or you don't. So it's, it's written there to be commended.
And I do give the downtown merchants first opportunity to buy their banners for their poles if they're located in or around their business. That's just one thing that I want to make sure that they get first choice, and if they decline, then we'll go on and give it to someone else.
I think we see a real big rebound in the downtown area once this gets completed.
I think so, too.
Near and then.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kimmy. Appreciate you. Appreciate all you do. Next on our agenda is a recommendation to appoint Fred Wood as assistant municipal judge to fill in for Judge Howell when he's unable to attend, to reside over a case and pay a hundred and fifty per hour for his services. This doesn't happen very often, but Judge Howell's here, I think, almost every time. Since I've been in office, I don't know if he's ever missed, but if he was to be able to miss, then you need to have somebody you can call on if he had to excuse himself because of a conflict of interest or maybe out of town for some reason. So this would just be our recommendation to help Fred Wood if we need him, and there's not very many times that we might need Mr. Wood, but if we do, we need to have someone we can call on to fill in, and he's agreed to do this.
How was he paid?
He was the last municipal judge, and we paid, they wrote about me, Marla did, the chief, and Judge Howell.
Okay, so Marla, the chief, and Judge Howell paid.
This is my recommendation.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Tammy, is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, Tammy, now would you say? Call in favor, say aye? Number seven, I'm going to...
Just seven, I would say.
Tammy, second. And we're going to skip number seven. We'll take that up later. We don't have anything else on our agenda tonight. Scott, I'm getting asked if he needs to talk to us in executive session, so we will do that when we come back. We will not have any other city business except adjournments.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We have to go down, so I can see that last page. Sorry about that. Number ten is discuss whether or not to move the May fifth meeting. Our next first meeting in May, I will be out of town for meetings that week. If y'all want to move it later in the week, we can, or we can move it to the second Monday. If we move it to the second Monday, we'll be meeting back-to-back Mondays, but that doesn't matter, so just whatever y'all want to do. I just knew that I'd be out of town that day, and if we move to meet, we need to do it in council meetings. I'll be back on that Tuesday, so we can still meet later in the week, or we could put it to the next Monday.
Is this May Tuesday?
Will you be there?
Will you be there?
I'll be back. I'm sorry to late, but I could be on Wednesday or Thursday, which would be the seventh.
Whatever you say.
Whatever the council wants to do.
Do you say September?
Please don't go major Tuesday.
I'll be back late. Yes, ma'am, I'll be back late. I could be on the Wednesday or, I guess, Thursday, which would be the seventh.
Thursday, not be better by getting the agenda prepared.
It would be for Jan, unless we meant following the twelfth.
With Thursday, if that week of the twelfth, it'd be better for you because an agenda is concerning.
That they found it. I mean, we communicate through email.
Yeah, we talk.
We usually invite somebody to find y'all.
Well, you'll meet on the seventh.
Yeah, let's do that.
I'm going to be eighth, I'm sorry.
Thursday, agree? Thursday, not Thursday, but...
Thursday the eighth, is that okay with y'all? Okay. Is there a motion to change it to May the eighth?
I'm not motioning change.
Okay, Francis, is there a second?
Say.
Okay, Tammy, all in favor, say aye? Okay, before adjourn, also, I want to announce a couple of things here. This coming Saturday is cleanup day for Hamilton, and the Lions Club will be feeding breakfast at the Methodist Church that morning. It starts at what time?
Seven.
Seven o'clock. And we'll last till about lunch, so if anybody that wants to come, please come that morning. We'll divide up into groups like we did last year and clean up different areas that need to be cleaned. We are going to have some inmates cleaner exits for us. We will have to do that on that Saturday. I encourage anybody that wants to, please come and get a free breakfast from the Lions Club, compliments of them, and event the first Methodist Church. Also, National Day of Prayer is May, is May the first, and that'd be at twelve oh five here at City Hall in the auditorium. So a lot of fresh ones should be served, and that's National Day of Prayer on May first. Also, April is Fair Housing Month, and in recognition of this, the governor of Alabama has issued a proclamation in honor of Fair Housing Month in the state of Alabama. The proclamation recognizes the significance of fair housing and encourages all Alabans to observe and support both the letter and spirit of fair housing law. We encourage all grantees as well as interest parties to help us observe and support fair housing months. We was asked to make this recommendation tonight or make this announcement.
Mayor, I have one thing.
Okay, Jan.
Back on the, I forgot what, is the Goodman Mills, the gas, the environmental...
Yes, ma'am.
Because they go back and amend that to allow for it to be paid out, the gas tax fund, if y'all desire.
Okay.
Pending, Scott, to research and see if it can...
Sure.
Reason I wanted to suggest that...
It would come out of general fund.
If it don't come out of general fund, a lot of things here lately would help us on our, on our...
I agree. That's a good thing, too.
If it can be, but we'll just go, we'll just make a amendment.
Pining it can come through a gasoline, but that's what we spent on...
Not a general fund.
Okay.
It would need research, I see.
Is that okay, Francis and Tammy to amend that?
Thank you, Tammy.
Yeah.
That's good.
Do I need to vote?
Do I need to vote to amend it?
Aye.
I make a motion.
Okay, Tammy votes to amend it.
Say.
Tammy votes, say. All in favor, say aye? Thank you, Scott and Jan, for thinking of that. That'll help us, because like you say, we've had several big things lately, studies and all, and if we can take it out of that gasoline tax, I'd be great. Okay, I need a motion to go to executive session, and Scott says this won't take but a few minutes.
I'm going to think it.
Ready to make a motion? Francis, say. All in favor, say aye?
January, plus...
Scott, you have to tell.
I can make a motion, send a race up a little front.
Okay. How is he, by the way? Is he doing all that?
He's doing fine.
Is he doing...
Did they, did they read him?
I'm going to...
Thanks, Scott, again.
Okay.
Anyway, I looked at the gym, I didn't think it was even that, not here today.
I know. You don't use them.
Well, yours is.
I'm back when I left.
Well, I did. I said, be sure.
We just need a motion to go back in to regular session.
I'll make a motion.
Here.
I'll say.
Tammy, say. All in favor, say aye? I'm going to vote, favor say aye? Thank you. Where's him?